This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
This annual town meeting will now come to order. Welcome. My name is Stacy Yarber and I am the North Haven Town Clerk. As Town Clerk, it's my duty to call this town meeting to order, and also to convene the meeting and to start forward with the first step of any town meeting, which is to elect a moderator. The moderator is nominated and elected by the members of the meeting, you. It is the moderator's function to bring before the meeting all items of the warning and to assist in obtaining the objective of the meeting, while ensuring the rights of individual voters who wish to be heard. The moderator's duties also include helping any member of the meeting who seeks clarification, or to advise them with regard to parliamentary procedure. Further, when it's time to vote on any issue tonight, including the moderator, please be aware to vote when miss being an elector. To be an elector of the town, one must have, one, have been a registered voter in the town at the time of the most recent election, or two, one who pays taxes to the town on an assessment of property of not less than $1,000 on the most recent grand list assessment date, a citizen of the United States, and 18 years of age or older. The regulation will be enforced all night with regard to any vote that is taken. If you're unsure of your ability to vote here tonight, I do have the registry list, and you can check with me at any time to confirm your status. Now, at this time, I'm going to open the floor to nominations for our meeting moderator. Is there a second? Any other nominations for meeting moderator? Hearing none, I'll put this to a vote. All in favor of Mr. David Mons as the annual town meeting moderator, please signify by saying aye. All opposed by saying nay. I now declare David Mons as moderator for this evening. Thank you.
Welcome. My name's Dave Mons. I'll be the moderator for the evening, and before I turn things back over to Stacy to read the call of the annual meeting, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out this evening to participate in North Haven Town Government. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the Town Clerk to read the agenda.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given of the annual town meeting of the Town of North Haven to be held on Monday, September 23rd, 2019, in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street, North Haven, Connecticut, at 7:00 PM. To consider and act upon the following: A. To consider and act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance to adjust appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, transferring amounts over $20,000 and the total sum of $663,124.88. B. To consider and act upon a resolution for the approval of a new inter-local agreement between the Town of North Haven and the Greater New Haven Water Pollution Control Authority, covering how the town and the GNHWPCA respectively handle intermunicipal exchange of wastewater flows and related sewer infrastructure issues, including invoicing for the same, and authorize the first selectman upon approval of the town meeting to execute said agreement. C. To consider and act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance that Section 32-9 of Article 5 of the finances ordinance at Chapter 32 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven be amended. Specifically, the requested amendment is that contracts for the purchase of personal property or for services by the town or the Board of Education at a value in excess of $25,000 shall be let by sealed public bid by the first selectman or the Board of Education, as the case may be. Public bidding shall continue to not be required for the services of attorneys at law, certified public accountants, licensed engineers, architects, physicians, or dentists. And finally, D. To consider and vote upon whether to adopt amendments to Sections 184-14 and 184-15 of Article 6, abatement for volunteer firefighters for the taxation ordinance at Chapter 184 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven, including an increase in the amounts of the available tax abatements to eligible volunteer firefighters based upon amended levels of responsiveness to fire calls and attendance at drills, and the extension of a tax abatement to retired volunteer firefighters who have completed 25 years of volunteer service in the Town of North Haven. The proposed amendments are on file and available for inspection in the office of the Town Clerk, and this was dated on the 5th day of September 2019 by the North Haven Board of Selectmen.
So before I have the Town Clerk reread the first agenda item for your consideration, I'd just like to go over a couple procedural rules. First, anyone who would like to comment or ask a question, please come forward to the microphone and begin by stating your name and your address. Two, we've got four items on the agenda, so please try to be concise in your comments, and please be civil, as I know you will be. We're going to limit discussion to each individual item, so only discussion on the item before you at the time. If you relinquish the floor and go back to your seat and decide you would like to make another comment or ask additional questions, please let others in the audience have the floor before you come back to the microphone a second time. And finally, if you do have questions rather than comments, I would ask you to state your questions and then return to your seat, and then we will ask the appropriate individual or individuals to respond to your questions. In that way, we're not going to have a back and forth. So with that, I'd ask the Town Clerk to read our first item of the night.
Thank you. Agenda item A. To consider and act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance to adjust appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, transferring amounts over $20,000 and the total sum of $663,124.88.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as stated by the Town Clerk? Is there a second? Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to be heard on this? First Selectman Frida?
Thank you very much, and welcome to those that are here in attendance this evening, and welcome to those who are watching live on North Haven TV. I wanted to just spend a few moments to explain that the resolution that has been read before you is a procedural issue that the town is obligated to bring forward to its residents at a town meeting at the annual town meeting. But to try to give you some deeper perspective as to what this means, as many of you know, we have approximately 500 line items in our town budget. These next two slides will show you the items that are part of the resolution. We see item number one all the way through. These are the line items among the town items, among the town departments that we are voting on tonight. When you look at the second page here, the second slide, you see the total amount of $663,124.88. I wanted to once again explain that this should not presume that the town overspent its budget, $663,124. In fact, what this means is that if you subtract these line items from the total line items in the town budget, we have over 470 line items and more that either came in under budget or came in on target. So what is the bottom line? The bottom line for our fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, is that the town actually came in $1.1 million under the budget expenditures. What that means, ladies and gentlemen, is we underspent the budget by $1.1 million. We also had an outstanding year on revenue. The town actually came in $533,000 over what our budgeted revenue was this past fiscal year, which means that we delivered a surplus of approximately $1.6 million. That is good news, ladies and gentlemen. The rating agencies like this. This is why the town is in a strong financial position. This is one of the many reasons why the town is AAA rated financially. And every year, we take the surplus, or a large portion of it, and give it back to the taxpayers as a revenue item in the following year's budget. So I would ask you to consider voting for this as a procedural issue and understanding that the town is in outstanding financial condition right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frida. Is there anyone else here who would like to comment on agenda item A?
Good evening. My name's Sally Buemi, 5 Blossom Drive. I have three questions for Mr. Swankowski, the Finance Director, regarding the transfers recommended by the Board of Finance, the $663,000. My first one, Mr. Swankowski, has to do with the phone call that you and I had today. When I asked about the line item in personal policy expenses from the 1819 budget called "safety issues," I had asked you how much of that $140,000 was spent on the two new firefighters, and you said about $71,000. And I asked where the other $69,000 went, because the final expenditure report that you submitted at the August Board of Finance meeting showed the entire $140,000 spent. When I asked you what happened to the other $69,000, you said that it went to the Fire Department Personnel Full-Time Line Item. So my question is, why isn't that one of the, why isn't the Fire Department Personnel Full-Time Line Item listed as one of these 10, because it was $69,000? So that's my first question, which, again, was generated from my phone call with you today. My second question has to do with one of the 10 items that is on the list, and that is the Fire Consultants for $30,739.49. The other nine line items in the list are all funded line items, line items in the budget. They were all funded. The Fire Consultant in the 1819 fiscal year that ended on June 30th, there was no funding for that line item. It was zero. So I'm just wondering why we're doing a transfer to something that wasn't a line item in the budget. All the other nine were. So that was my second question. And my third and final question is, I assume the $663,124 is coming from various sources in order to effectuate these transfers. So can you summarize where the money is coming from? Those are my three questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Let me first address Sally's first question. With the $140,000, or $220,000 in the safety line, what I had, I'm sorry, $140,000 is in the safety line. What I had charged there was $140,000 worth of fire overtime. It turned out that was around $71,000 and change for the two new firefighters, but at the time, $140,000 was charged there versus the fire budget. The second question was regarding the Fire Consultant line. For the past several years, that line has had no money on it, and we've charged several thousand dollars each year to that line. This year, it happened to be $30,739.49. But keep in mind, this line was offset by almost $500,000 in revenue last year. Even though there wasn't a line item for it, it was more than offset by the fees that were generated by it. And the final item she had asked about, where's the money coming from? Out of those 540 total accounts, three or 400 of them were under budget. So the money gets transferred from the items that are under budget first within the department, and then whatever's left to help offset overages in other departments. So that's how we offset the overages that are over $20,000 between departments on this resolution. And there really were only 10 that were over $20,000 that needed funding from other departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? It's fairly bright, yes. Yeah, it doesn't look like anyone else has their hand up, as far as I can see, so... Sure, I'll recognize you, Sally.
I am satisfied with the answer that Mr. Swankowski gave to my third question. My first question, he did not answer at all. I know that you only spent $71,000 out of the $140,000. But you also said to me today that the remaining $69,000 went to the Fire Department Personnel Full-Time Line. So why isn't that one of the items listed? You acknowledged what happened. I know what happened. But why, why isn't the $69,000... First of all, did I understand you correctly today? Did you tell me that $69,000 of that $140, line item, was transferred to Fire Department Personnel? And if I understood you correctly, which I think I did, why isn't it reflected in the list? That's really what I wanted to know. And as far as the Fire Consultant, it did, you're absolutely right. The plan reviews did bring in significant money, but it's reflected on the list as $39,739.49. But according to the expenditure report, we spent $96,000, but only $30,000 is on the list. And again, why is an unfunded, I mean, we spend money on stuff all the time that's not in the budget, because unforeseen things happen. Why is this one unfunded item that's not in the budget included in this particular transfer? I do understand what Mr. Frida said about the procedural necessity of doing this. I understand it from a balancing accounting perspective. I just don't understand why, you know, we spend money on a lot of things that aren't in the budget that come up. Why is this showing up specifically on this list when it was not a funded line item? So if you could just address again, the $69,000, did it go to the Fire Department Personnel Full-Time Line Item, like you said? And if so, it's over $20,000, and why isn't it on the list?
Thank you, Ms. Buemi.
The $69,000 for the other Fire Department Personnel went to that line. The line had $140,000. I ended up charging it to that line, and that's why that happened. As far as the Fire Consultant line, yes, it's less than what it was over budget. However, keep in mind that within the department, if you go through all the line items, there had to be some lines that were under budget that would offset it first, and only the difference would be brought over to this category.
Any additional comments, questions?
Sally's saying, "I still don't hear where the $69,000 actually went, or how it was spent, or where it was allocated to, what actually happened to it." So, thanks.
Do you want to respond?
I'll just put it a little differently. If the $140,000 line item, $71,000 was for the two new firefighters, the difference was used for Fire Personnel Full-Time.
Thank you. Yes?
Nancy Barrett, Crestview Drive. I'm sorry to have to beat a dead horse on this, but at the last Board of Finance meeting, I specifically asked Mr. Swankowski how much over the $140,000 that was specifically earmarked for the firefighters who were hired mid-year through the 2018-19 fiscal year, how much over that $140,000 did we go? And I believe your response, please correct me if I'm wrong, but your response was, "We went a little bit over $140,000." And now we're hearing that the actual estimate was only $71,000. So which was it? Thank you.
Thank you.
When I made that comment, I made it often our estimate be, we had estimated two firefighters for a full year would be $280,000. Half of that would be the $140,000. So since I thought it was, the person started in December, I figured we'd be a little bit over. But I hadn't researched it, because it was sitting at the meeting. And when I went back and had our HR department research it, it turned out it was only $71,000, because they didn't start till early January, and some of the costs for the particular gentleman came in a little bit lower.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd like to bring this resolution to a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? The resolution passes. If you would read the second agenda item, please.
Thank you. Agenda item B. To consider and act upon a resolution for the approval of a new inter-local agreement between the Town of North Haven and the Greater New Haven Water Pollution Control Authority, covering how the town and the GNHWPCA respectively handle intermunicipal exchange of wastewater flows and related sewer infrastructure issues, including invoices for the same, and authorize the first selectman upon approval of the town meeting to execute said agreement.
Thank you, Stacy. So may I have a motion to adopt a resolution identified as item B? Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? First Selectman Frida?
Approximately six to eight months ago, perhaps longer, we received a phone call from the Greater New Haven Water Pollution Control Authority, and it was presented to us that the inter-local agreement had not been updated since 1969. At that time, we had an inter-local agreement with the Town of Hampden, and post-1969, they consolidated into the New Haven WPCA. So what you're voting on tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is as follows. It is a flow exchange modification to the existing inter-local. We discovered that there's five commercial businesses outside of North Haven that are depositing wastewater into the North Haven Water Pollution Control Facility. But we also learned that there's 170 residents of North Haven whose wastewater is being deposited into the New Haven Water Pollution Control Authority. Those are residents that are just east of the Whitney Avenue area in town. So what this means is that when we look at the inflow of the five commercial businesses coming into North Haven from the New Haven area, that represents approximately 4.5 million gallons per day. The outflow, North Haven's 170 residents, whose wastewater is going to the New Haven WPCA, that represents 12.5 million, 5 million gallons a day. So what this means is that we need to compensate the New Haven WPCA for what is about $30,000 a year, the difference between the inflow and the outflow. But what we're also trying to do is protect those residents in North Haven, because they'll be paying the North Haven sewer rate fee versus paying approximately $165 a year more, which is what the New Haven sewer rate fee is. So I wanted to give you that overview. That's what you're voting on tonight, and I would hope that you would consider voting this resolution, because we, I have met with the WPCA in New Haven. Our town attorney, Jeff Donarfio, was heavily involved with this, who has a great history of this from the past, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Jim Corno, 38 Marlin Drive. I had a couple of questions regarding your figures there. Now, you say that 170, that's residents or households, use 12 million gallons of water?
Households.
Hmm?
Residential households.
170 households use 12 million gallons of water? How often? How often was the usage 12 million gallons? There was so much in excess of the five commercial establishments. Doesn't sound right.
Sir, could you state all your questions, and then return to your seat, and then we'll have the appropriate individuals respond?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Well, that's my concern. It sounds like it's out of whack, and why should we pay $30,000?
So the question is, why should we pay $30,000? I suppose we have an option to have the 170 households pay $165 more a month to work with New Haven, and that's what we don't want to do. We carefully studied, and our town engineer was involved with this process, we carefully studied the inflows versus the outflows. And when we look at the calculations on commercial inflows, which is a different formula from residential outflows, that is the $30,000. Now, the way this works, sir, is that we have an enterprise fund at the WPCA. It's a fund that's outside the town budget. And what that means is, all of the usage fees that we collect go into a separate enterprise fund. That fund also is doing very well. We look to build it up to ensure that if there's work that needs to be done under the streets and roads of North Haven, if a pipe bursts, it comes out of that fund. So to answer your question, why should we pay the $30,000? That's the difference between the commercial inflow and the residential outflow. And that is based on North Haven sewer usage charge for those residents, those 170 households, versus once again having them pay about $165 more a year if they were to deal directly with the New Haven WPCA.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I would ask to bring this to a vote. All in favor of adopting resolution identified as item B, signify by saying aye. All opposed, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. Town clerk, if you would read item number C.
Thank you. Agenda item C. To consider and act upon a resolution in accordance with a recommendation of the Board of Finance that section 32-9 of Article 5 of the Finances Ordinance at Chapter 32 of the ordinances of the town of North Haven be amended. Specifically, the requested amendment is that contracts for the purchase of personal property or for services by the town or the Board of Education at a value in excess of $25,000 shall be let by sealed, public bid by the first selectman or the Board of Education, as the case may be. Public bidding shall continue to not be required for the services of attorneys at law, certified public accountants, licensed engineers, architects, physicians, or dentists.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt resolution item letter C? Is there a second? Any discussion? Mr. Swankowski?
Yes, with this resolution, we're looking to raise the bid threshold from $7,500 to $25,000. Years ago, it was $1,000. Several years ago, we changed it to $7,500. And going forward, I think the best thing for the town's interest is to raise it to $25,000, considering the number of bids below that have been pretty, well, haven't been that many over the past couple of years. So.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions from the audience? Yes, Ms. Buamey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Buamey, 5 Blossom Drive. Right. This, Mr. Swankowski is correct. When our charter was adopted in 1981, the only contracts over $1,000 required public bid, and this was per 406A of our town charter. Then in 2009, it went up to $7,500, and now there's this proposal to go to $25,000. $25,000 is the statutory maximum that the state legislature allows for public bidding per section 7-148V of our Connecticut general statutes. So, right now, if there is a contract either on the town side or the Board of Ed side for anything over $7,500, either goods or services, it has to go out to bid. The purpose of the public bidding process is to hopefully guarantee that we get a good price, the best bang for our tax dollar buck, so to speak. So by raising it to $25,000, you're going to reduce the number of contracts for goods and services that will have to go out to public bid. And I just want to give a brief history on this proposed amendment. We had a special town meeting on March 25th of 2019, and at a special town meeting, actually voted to approve this amendment by a four-to-three vote. Wasn't, it was in the town hall, not here in the auditorium. So it's good to see more people here tonight. So we won't have a four-to-three vote. We'll have more people voting, which is always good. So the question is, well, why are we voting on it again if we approved this amendment in March 25th of 2019? The reason is, a citizen, Nancy Barrett, had raised some procedural concerns at the April Board of Finance meeting, claiming that the Board of Finance members were given some inaccurate information while they were deliberating whether or not to make this recommendation to increase this bidding threshold. As a result, the town attorney, according to the Board of Finance Chair at the May Board of Finance meeting, the town attorney recommended a revote, and that was done in August because there's no June or July Board of Finance meeting. And then in September, the Board of Selectmen called this item to be on tonight's agenda. And I just want to say, before I get to the merits of this, that, you know, for those of you who've been watching me for the past six years, I'm always advocating for people to participate in our local government and encouraging people to come to meetings and to speak up. And I think that this is a perfect example of citizens participating in our government. And if you come to a town meeting, to any public meeting, whether it's Board of Finance, town meeting, Board of Selectmen, and you have something reasonable to suggest, you can make a difference. And the fact that the town attorney advised the Board of Finance to revote, I think clearly shows the merits of Mrs. Barrett's concerns, and that her suggestion was, in fact, meritorious. So let's get to the substance here. My concern about this, and I was one of the three people that voted against it on March 25th, and one of the reasons was that there was no one from the Board of Ed to the Finance Office to speak as to how this increase would impact the Board of Ed, how many contracts it would affect. We've heard Mr. Swankowski, who's only on the town side, say that it wouldn't impact very many. I believe at the May, at the March 25th meeting, he said that it would affect about 30 contracts, based on the average contracts per year. But, and again, we haven't heard from anybody tonight from the Board of Ed on how this threshold would impact the number of contracts that they have on their side. We all know that the Board of Ed is a significant portion of our total town budget. So I'm a little disappointed there's no one here to comment from the Board of Ed. At the March 25th, 2019, meeting where this, again, this was presented and passed, Mr. Swankowski said that it was recommended by our auditor, and that we were looking to save some dollars in administrative time. Those are quotes. And another quote is, "We still might bid if we feel it is necessary," unquote. So that begs the question, why bother changing the threshold if you still might go out for bid anyway? I just don't like the, we're increasing it threefold, more than threefold, from $7,500 to the statutory max of $25,000. And I just think that it allows for too much discretionary spending, not only for the current administration, but for administrations going forward into the future. And I tried to, I did contact, after many attempts, I finally was able to speak with the auditor who initially mentioned this amendment, Mr. Centafanti, and he would not explain to me at all his justification for recommending this increase in the threshold. And one other thing that I wanted to talk about this is, at the March 25th town meeting, and I believe at the Board of Finance meeting when they were discussing this recommendation, there was some talk of saving money for legal ads, because when you put something out for public bid, you have to put a legal ad in the paper. So I looked at the Finance Department's legal ad budget line, and in 1819, for example, it was budgeted at $20,000, but we only spent $6,000. And that is according to page five of the year-end expenditure report. In 1516, we were not even half. 1617, we spent $11,000 out of $20,000, and 1718, $9,000 out of $20,000. So I don't see any huge legal ad costs that would perhaps, and I emphasize the word perhaps, provide justification for this increase. I think that any legal costs for the legal ads in the paper are far outweighed by the potential savings of getting the lowest possible bid on a contract for goods or for services. So for these reasons, I still just have not heard a compelling reason for this dramatic increase all the way up to the statutory maximum. And so I would urge you to vote against this amendment. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Buamey. First, Selectman Frida?
I wanted to let everyone know that there is someone here from the Board of Education tonight, and she's asked to say a few words. Her name is Pam Mangini, and she's the new business manager, has been with us for several months now, worked closely with Ed Swankowski and myself and our superintendent of schools. Pam comes to the Board of Education of North Haven with a tremendous amount of experience, having been a Board of Education business manager for many years, but also having been on the town side, being a director of finance for many years. So she has many different perspectives, and she's asked to say a few words. Pam?
Good evening. I'm happy to have the opportunity to just share thoughts on behalf of the Board of Education with regard to this resolution. We honestly felt that it was a very reasonable threshold to increase our bidding process, too. I think it's important to recognize that even though the bid process may be increased to $25,000, it doesn't necessarily mean that when we think it's worthwhile to bid that we would not, just because it's at $15,000. We're very cautious. I've only been here for six months, but I've been doing this for quite some time, and I can tell you that I take our budgets very seriously. I take public finance dollars very seriously, as does the Board of Education. So I think it's important to recognize that while I do understand Sally's concerns, I have come from many other districts and towns where the $25,000 threshold has been set, it's been well-received, it does provide for a little more flexibility, and I believe a little bit more efficiencies as well. So we do support it at the Board of Ed, and again, I can't help emphasize and stress enough that we would take it very seriously and proceed very cautiously.
Thank you, Ms. Mangini. Additional comments from you, Ms. Barrett?
As Selectwoman, excuse me, as Selectwoman Buamey outlined in her history of the public bidding threshold resolution, in my opinion, there were numerous failures associated with this resolution when it was first introduced that, again, in my opinion, compromised the perceived integrity of both the outside auditor, Mr. Centafanti, our Board of Finance, and our town meeting form of government. While my objections to previous votes on this issue were mostly procedural in nature, specifically, I believe that the undue influence of the Director of Finance on the terms of the proposed resolution, combined with misleading statements from the Board of Finance Chair, the first selectman, and further compounded by the inability for the legislative body, that's us, the town meeting, to obtain information pertaining to the resolution from either the auditor or the Board of Education, compromise the validity of the voting process and outcome. That is why, on the advice of counsel, there is today a revote. It bears repeating that while the whole idea for the increasing of the bidding threshold from $7,500 to $25,000 originated with the Director of Finance, Mr. Swankowski, it did not originate with the outside auditor from O'Connor-Davies. Ultimately, although a combination of using the outside auditor, again, paid for with our tax dollars, and personally writing the proposed resolution, Mr. Swankowski was able to dictate a proposed change to the North Haven Town Financial Ordinance legislation and establish the dollar cap, which coincidentally happens to match the maximum limit allowed for in the state of Connecticut. So in other words, ladies and gentlemen, by proposing the threshold increase, Mr. Swankowski is attempting to maximize his own discretionary project bidding selection power, as well as Pam's power as well, as Sally mentioned. This applies to both the town side and the Board of Education. So in my opinion, this represents a very slippery slope. All projects with a value below the established threshold are subject to private bidding processes at the sole discretion of the Finance Director for the town and for the Board of Education, with no required number of bids to ensure competitive market forces. That is, that's not to say that they won't pursue multiple bids, but they are not required to pursue certain types of bids or a certain number of bids. So therefore, you don't have the downward pressure of market forces to ensure, as Sally said, the best bang for your buck. And those projects above the threshold are subject to a state-mandated sealed competitive bidding process. And while it is time-consuming, this process, much like a free-market economy, yields the best return on our investment, and still provides the Finance Directors with plenty of discretionary room. If you'll allow me, I'd like to read to you some of the language that's used in an invitation to bid from the town of North Haven. This is a selection from the instructions for a sealed bid for the removal of underground storage tanks and replacement with above-ground storage tanks in vaults, project number 18-15. And in it, it says specifically, "After bids are received, the Director of Finance and Administration may analyze whether vendors have submitted comparable bids and meet the requirements called for in that bid. In reviewing the bids, the Director of Finance and Administration may consider the past performance, financial responsibility, sales and service experience of the vendors before awarding the bid. The Director of Finance and Administration reserves the right to reject any or all bids, to waive any defects in same, or to choose to make purchases other than strictly in accordance with price considerations, and/or to choose other than lowest bidder if it is deemed in the best interest of the town." So in other words, even with the sealed bidding process, the Directors of Finance still have a decent amount of discretionary wiggle room. So the question is, why would we approve this resolution? What are the stated advantages of this resolution, and who do they provide advantages to? As Sally mentioned, there are three potential impacts: time, money, and power. While, yes, this resolution, by increasing the ceiling for public bidding, may in fact reduce the administrative time to both Pam and Ed and their staffs. But ultimately, that's not why we're here. I believe Ed quoted that there are approximately 30 bids in excess, in the last year, in excess of $7,500, of which 60% or 18% are above $25,000. So in other words, Ed wants to make 12, or the other 40%, discretionary by raising the threshold. Well, that, to me, just doesn't seem like it's in the town's best interest. So the second issue is money, and as Sally pointed out, the savings in legal ads is really negligible. And in most cases, less than 30% of the budgeted amount was actually used in any given year. And last is discretionary authority. And yes, combined with the preference given to in-town vendors, that this discretionary authority could be a recipe for disaster. In summary, there has been no quantitative evidence presented that the proposed more-than-threefold increase to the public bidding threshold will significantly benefit the town of North Haven. We can only assume that the reason for the Connecticut statute 7-148V, the only reason that it was written and passed is that our state legislators, in their infinite wisdom, recognized that the bidding process has the potential for abuse, both by elected and non-elected officials, and requires a state-mandated process as well as a cap. Since I have not heard any compelling reason to alter our financial ordinance, I recommend that we keep the threshold at $7,500 and keep a close record of projects in value between $7,500 and $25,000, and document any bids that vendors refuse to submit due to the current threshold. I consider myself a reasonable person who would be happy to review a sound argument for change that is actually backed up by for change that is actually backed up by data. Anything short of that seems hasty and irresponsible. I hope you all agree. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Additional comments or questions from the audience? Mr. Swinkowski?
Thank you, Mr. Swinkowski, for yielding the floor. My name is Tim Daheny. I reside in 199 Lane here in North Haven, and I'm a member of the Board of Finance. I didn't come this evening with any prepared remarks, but I thought I'd make a few comments based on what Ms. Barrett just said. First of all, I'd like everyone here to know, and those at home, that what's before you tonight has twice passed the Board of Selectmen, sorry, the Board of Finance unanimously. Both parties, every member, twice voted to raise this limit to $25,000. I won't go into the necessity of a second vote. I actually don't think it was necessary. I think it was done by the chairman of the board in order to allay any concerns that were raised by Ms. Barrett and Ms. Buemi about the original vote. I think you should understand what you have here. It's a vote to raise the bid limit to $25,000. I think whenever you talk numbers, you have to talk relativity. We have a budget of $103 million. If my math is right, $25,000 is 1/40th of 1% of $103 million. Now, $25,000 is real money to people like myself, probably Ms. Barrett, and probably others here in the room, okay? But what we're also talking about is raising the public let here. So if you ask Mr. Swinkowski, what he'll tell you is that if they get requests for contracts for less than $25,000, they still get bids, and he could fill in a little bit better than I could as to what they do. It's not they don't get bids, he still does get bids. I find it a little disingenuous, by the way, to imply that Mr. Swinkowski did this in some underhanded way in order to benefit himself. Whether or not there was a conversation between him and Mr. Santafani as to whether or not this item should be raised is really meaningless. He's a professional, he's a member of the senior management in this town, he's a CPA, and he's worked here for a long time, and I can tell you that the members of the Board of Finance have great confidence in him. I think ourselves, as a member of the Board of Finance, and those of us in the audience, including our active participants in the Board of Finance meeting, often call Mr. Swinkowski after the meetings, looking for his advice and information, and it's unfair to now get up and say that that same advice that he may have given to the Board of Finance was in some way done with his own self-interest put forward. So I don't mean to start a fight here, but I thought that comment was unfair. So I apologize for taking up a couple minutes of your time. I do definitely support raising this limit as up to $25,000, just like many other towns have, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Daheny. Sir? Do you have a comment?
I'm Fritz Edgar, 290 Spring Road. With all due respect to my friends over here who made excellent points, I got to point out that there's a reason why budgets get to be $103 million. It's when they start ignoring the difference between $7,500 and $25,000. That's gradual bracket creep that basically consists of most of what government does when they spend money. There used to be a senator that said, "A billion here and a billion there, pretty soon we're talking real money." So I would say, as a citizen that feels my power to influence spending on every level of government constantly eroding, I would want to say, even if I didn't imply a motive on a particular, the part of a particular member of government, that I would want them to fight over and think over every dollar that they spend, and the more control that we as citizens have, and the more effort the bureaucrats have to go through to spend my money, the better off we are, even though I appreciate that I don't understand the minutia of everything they do. It strikes me that jumping from $7,500 to $25,000 is probably unnecessary and counterproductive, and it also, more importantly, goes against the judgment of Ms. Buemi and Mrs. Barrett, who, as you all know, are always right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Swinkowski?
One other thing I failed to mention earlier is that, under our current bidding threshold for items under $7,500, items between 1,000 and 2,500, we still get three verbal quotes from vendors. Between 25 and 75, we're still getting, we get three written quotes, and nobody could present anything to me without those three quotes. In addition to that, we also have the capability of going on a state website where if items are there and already been bid out, we could tag onto that. There's also a Board of Ed website, I think it's called Pep 'Em, that we could tag onto that and get bids from. And as I've said before, anytime anything looks questionable, we'll put it right out to bid, because I think just that's in the best interest of the town. And believe me, I'm not doing anything for my self-interest. I always try to make decisions that are for the best interest of the town, and that's just the way I look at my job on a day-to-day basis. So I'll just take it from there.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions from the audience? Oh, yes.
Sherman Katz, Sherwood Drive, resident 50 years. I don't mean any disrespect in what I'm going to say. There's something called temptation, and we've seen times in this town where funds were redirected. The senior center, tens of thousands, the tax collector's office, several thousand, and also some of our purchases. I don't want to go into detail because it would bring out the individuals. There were some purchases made over the past few years where the supplier was taken off the state bid list. Well, my time in business tells me that's not a good way to do it. That particular job came in at $20,000. I got competitive bids from several other companies just to show that that could have been done for under $15,000. That same company came back to bid another similar job, and again, they were 50% higher than the other bidders. So you really need to be careful what you're looking at. That's my feeling about the state bid list. This is our money, and I hate to put it in this way, but when there's no checks and balances, it leaves the door to temptation. Temptation is called kickbacks, bribes, and I'm not saying anyone is doing it, but you open the door. To give someone a free hand to make a purchase of $25,000, no matter who the person is, it could make them stop and think. I hope that never happens here. I'm the, I'm not a pencil pusher or a desk jockey. I'm a regular working guy, and I really would like to see us keep the threshold at the I don't think we have to make anyone's job easier, and I don't think the few thousand dollars in advertisement is going to break the town, especially when you have a $1.6 million surplus. That, as I have always said, it's not a surplus, it's an overtax. We were overtaxed to the point of $1.6 million. You can swing it any way you want, but that's where the money came from. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Additional comments or questions? Mr. Swinkowski?
In response to Mr. Katz's comments, I just want to say, you know, I agree with you on the state bid. I don't always use the state bid. I found that we had done a construction project, and the vendors would be available on a state bid, but I said, "Given the state of the economy, we should just go out and bid this," which we did, and the bids came in a lot lower than what we had done on this, from the state bid, and that was a bigger project. A lot of the little items, they were great off the state bid price because they're small, but a larger item like that, yeah, we took it off. We didn't take it from the state, we did go out and bid. And one other thing I just want to comment on, you mentioned earlier about, not Sherman, but it was mentioned earlier that the state had a limit of $25,000. So I did look that up, and that was done in October 89, and that was also the time when our town budget was about $34 million. So that's an old number, and I would imagine with inflation, if they were to look at it and review it again, that that number would be significantly higher, but that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'd like to bring this to a vote. All in favor of adopting the current resolution under discussion? Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Abstentions? The resolution is adopted. If you could read the final agenda item, please.
Our final agenda item for the evening, Agenda Item D, to consider and note upon whether to adopt amendments to Sections 184-14 and 184-15 of Article 6, Abatement for Volunteer Firefighters of the Taxation Ordinances at Chapter 184 of the ordinances of the town of North Haven, including an increase in the amounts of the available tax abatement to eligible volunteer firefighters based upon amended levels of responsiveness to fire calls and attendance at drills, and the extension of a tax abatement to retired volunteer firefighters who have completed 25 years of volunteer service in the town of North Haven.
I have a motion to adopt a resolution as framed by the town clerk. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? First selectman?
Thank you. I'd like to start off by giving you some history on this. Our fire chief, Chief Paul Gianiuschewski, our fire commission, have done an outstanding job at highlighting to us one of the dilemmas we've had with the volunteer firefighter ranks dwindling down through the years. These men and women are critically important to augment the efforts of our paid fire department. So we've had a series of discussions down through the past year to 18 months about what we could do as a fire department, as a fire commission, as the town of North Haven, to offer another incentive to at least retain the volunteers we have, or potentially even attract more, to help once again augment the efforts of our paid fire department. I'd like to personally thank State Representative Davy Accarino, who really took a leadership role in Hartford in sponsoring Public Act 19-36, which allows the municipalities, the bill was passed, to bring up the $1,000 tax incentive, or abatement if you will, to $1,500 per year. So what does that mean? We have 31 volunteer firefighters who earn up to that $1,000 for their efforts every day on behalf of the town of North Haven. They don't get paid, there's no salary. So those 31 volunteer firefighters capturing up to $1,000 worth of incentives, if you will, that cost the town about $21,800. We're proposing tonight, and I support this 100%, that in concert with Public Act 19-36, we raise the volunteer firefighters from 1,000 to 1,500 a year. That will cost the town an additional $15,500. And then next year, we'll be back to once again bring that up to what the Public Act allows, $2,000. But for the purposes of tonight, we're voting on the one year, the one fiscal year upcoming, to bring the $1,000 to $1,500. And I hope, ladies and gentlemen, you would consider voting for this. Their efforts are tremendously appreciated by the fire chief, the fire commission, the paid fire department, to help enhance the efforts of those wonderful men and women who are also serving as part of our paid fire department. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions? Ms. Buemi?
Thank you. Sally Buemi, still at Five Blossom. I fully support the increased abatement for our volunteer firefighters. Our volunteer firefighters deserve the increased benefit for the time that they give to our community, and for the dangers inherent in the work that they do as volunteer firefighters. And as the First Selectman very accurately stated, we need to attract and retain, retaining, I think even more important, more volunteer firefighters. In the past two budget seasons during the fire department workshops, our fire chief has emphasized very strongly that we have a problem with our numbers and our retention of firefighters. And so, and he also stated that we have a problem with volunteers not showing up for calls. So I believe that this proposed ordinance does all three of these things. It not only increases the amounts of the abatements, but it makes it dependent upon responsiveness, different percentages of responsiveness of calls to be eligible. But I'm very supportive of this. We do have, you know, an existing ordinance, but I am very much in favor of increasing the credit. I am concerned about, you know, many of our volunteer firefighters are young people, and they might not own real estate in town, and I'm concerned about, you know, they might have, they might still be living with their parents or renting, you know, I don't know. They may certainly own a car, you know, a motor vehicle, but not real estate, and, you know, the car tax is, you know, what's your average car tax? $400, $500? Obviously, it's less if you have an older car. So I'm concerned that the younger volunteers, or those volunteers that don't own real estate, are not getting the full advantage of the abatement. And I did notice that the second part of the state statute that the First Selectman mentioned does allow for exemptions as well, and so I'm wondering if we can go a little further in this amendment to help our volunteers who don't own real estate and only own a motor vehicle to actually receive the full benefit of the credit. And also, the statute allows for inter-local agreements for out-of-town volunteers, and I didn't see anything in the proposed amendment that would, you know, we do have some volunteers that don't live in town, and I think that we, but still, they are contributing tremendously to the department and... and working for us as volunteers. So I was hopeful that there would be something in the proposed amendment to this ordinance to help the volunteers that live out of town, because the state statute does mention that as a possibility, that, you know, the statute is optional. The state statute, it's an optional statute, but it does talk about out-of-town volunteers. So again, in summary, I fully support this increase, they deserve it, but I would also like to know how those who own only cars and those out of town could receive their fair share of the benefit. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for your comments. First electman?
All right, thank you, Sally. I wanted to just state that this Public Act 19-36 is a public act that we're voting on in its entirety. I think I said it's a two-stage process. The, we're voting tonight on adopting Public Act 19-36, which includes the elevation from 1,000 to 1,500 this fiscal year. And then we're also voting tonight to make it $2,000 in accordance with the public act. Now, I'm going to ask Jennifer Capola to come up to address what Ms. Boemi just brought to all of our attention, which we've been involved with, by the way. And we, through the efforts of Jennifer, decided to go forward with this Public Act 19-36 tonight, adopting a two-year phase-in to 1,500 to 2,000. But we ran into a little bit of a predicament in terms of the out-of-town volunteers. Jennifer?
Just in terms of the public act, thanks for the introduction, Mike. In terms of the public act...
Jennifer, could you just identify your role?
Of course. My name is Jennifer Capola, I'm from Seal in Donafrillo, and I'm outside council to the town. In terms of the public act, the portion that we adopted, just, this is for clarification as far as the changes, the amendments to the ordinance, and if anybody would like to see it before you vote, I do have copies. But the public act allows for an increase in the tax credit that volunteer firefighters are receiving for the period commencing July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2021, up to $1,500. And then beyond, or on it, or after July 1, 2021, that abatement, that tax credit that is allowed for volunteer firefighters goes up to 2,000. And what we've adopted in the amendments to Article 6 of the taxation ordinance is a sliding scale, and this is based upon to the language of, that you're going to be voting on tonight, of the resolution. But it is on a sliding scale, and it's based upon the participation of the volunteer firefighters in total fire calls and the drills that they have for training purposes. With regard to Ms. Boemi's comment about consideration of motor vehicle tax paid, that is in the ordinance, and that is based upon the municipal option statute that the ordinance obtains its authority from. So that is 12-81W of the Connecticut General statutes. As far as extending the tax abatement or the tax credit to volunteer firefighters that live outside the town, what the public act provides, and this is at the last, actually the last sentence of the public act, it says that "Any ordinance may authorize interlocal agreements for the purpose of providing property tax relief to such volunteers who live in one municipality but volunteer or volunteered their services in another municipality." We did consider this. We had a meeting with regard to whether or not we would incorporate that language into the ordinance at this time. The town has not been approached by any other towns about entering into an interlocal agreement. There are a lot of considerations, as you might expect, certainly with regard to the collective bargaining agreement. So there's labor considerations for the full-time firefighters versus the volunteers. And obviously, there are a lot of budgetary considerations as well. So it's not something that, at this time, that the town is considering adding to the ordinance, but certainly, if the town were approached at some point in the future, that would be brought forth through the appropriate public meeting process. So if anybody has any other questions, the chief is also here to answer any of your questions. But again, if anybody would like to see a copy of the amendments, I do have copies, so.
Thank you.
Additional comments?
I'm sorry, I just, I didn't realize the town council was here. I just had a specific question about the car tax. You said it's in here. So let's say somebody, you know, Section A applies, which is the period July 2019 through June 30, 2021, Attorney Capola, and a volunteer firefighter complies with number three, with the percentage of responses and drills, which was entitled him or her to $1,500 abatement. But if all they own is a car with like a $400 tax bill, what do they get? I want to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
If they didn't meet the threshold in terms of the tax liability, then they would not, in fact, get a tax credit. But again, the credit is based on any real or personal property tax that they pay, including motor vehicle tax.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Joe Capucci, I live on Surrey Drive in North Haven. I was very happy to hear that we're going to give the volunteers an increase. I was a volunteer for years at Northeast Company Four, and I'm presently a fire commissioner. And the entire commission is very happy with the procedure that is going on here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capucci. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jennifer Atkins from 67 Upper State Street, and I am one of the volunteer firefighters. I feel like I've said that before. Just a quick question. The way it reads right now, if we're allotted $1,500, and say my car taxes are $400, does that mean I get a check or something? What happens to the other $1,100?
Do you have additional questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
The law does not allow for a payout of a difference. So you would not get a payout. That's not permitted under the law.
Yes, Mr. Katz?
I don't have any papers with me now. I'm listening to what I was just told about a $1,500 tax abatement. I don't think there's a person in this room outside of a fireman that would go into a burning building to save people or property. I don't think $1,500 is right. If we're allowed 2,000, why are you holding back the $500 for another year? You have a $1.6 million surplus. You say that you're using it to spend it on the town, to buy good things. I haven't heard a fireman say, "I'll go in after I get my next abatement." These guys are out there, facing the fire, facing dangers, and even 2,000 isn't enough. But if that's all you can do, I think you should do it now, and not be cheap about it, and put it off. We've had the same thing with union contracts. You let them go for two, three, four years. I don't understand it. I don't understand how a town works like that. Reward these guys and ladies for what they're doing, please.
Thank you from Mr. Katz.
I'm going to read some statutory language to you. I know everybody who regularly attends loves when I do this, but the reason why it's not 2,000 now that you're voting on is because it's not allowed by the statute. The statute specifically provides, and I'm quoting, "Such tax relief may provide either 1A for the period commencing July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2021, an abatement of up to $1,500 in property taxes due for any fiscal year; and B on and after July 1, 2021, an abatement of up to $2,000 in property taxes due for any fiscal year." So that's why it is what it is. We can't give them 2,000 now.
Your attorney, Capola. Mr. Katz?
Many things in this world are done not along exact lines. We find ways to pay for things, buy things, do things, that are not above the law, but they sidestep the law. I'm sure there's a way that this town can find to reward these firemen, not illegally, but there has to be some way. Christmas presents? You can't tell me that Mr. Frieda cannot find a way to make this up to them. Thank you.
Seeing none, I'd like to bring Agenda Item D to a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is adopted. So thank you all for attending and participating. There being no further business, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the Town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.